...meeting, and it's a pleasure to host the Lowell High School Winter Sports Programs. And we want to put our hands together for your efforts throughout your career at Lowell High School, but more importantly, the way you have carried on the tradition of being great sportsmen and keeping your head high on and off the court in the field. So, thank you for being here. With that said, if everyone will join with me and rise, and we're going to salute America by saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Seven present.
Special honor of a business, spotlight on excellence, Lowell High School Department of Interscholastic Athletics, Winter Athletics Report. The Spotlight on Excellence presentation on Wednesday, March 18th, will recognize Lowell High School Winter Athletic Teams. And I would like to invite to the podium, who needs no introduction, he's just a great athletic director, Mr. James DiProffio. Please, students, put your hands together for him.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, Superintendent Dr. Scott, members of the Central Administration. On behalf of Headmaster Samaras, we'd like to thank you for the gracious invitation to attend tonight's meeting. A Red Raider is committed to excellence in everything that they do, academics, activities, and citizenship. The coaches and student athletes who are with me this evening, just a small representative of the hundreds of terrific student athletes that represent our school and our community all over Massachusetts and New England, and the coaches are also great representatives of the teachers and staff members that work with these students every day. What I wish to do this evening is just to recognize the coaches, and each one will just make a brief presentation about their season. This isn't all the coaches or all the teams, but we selected some to come in the interest of time, and I did turn in a complete report to you of all of our teams.
Mr. DiProffio, you don't have to be brief. Take as long as you need.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate it. So, if it's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce coaches, and they'll come up and introduce their players. First, I'd like to introduce the girls' basketball coach, Mr. Mike Crowley.
Thank you, Jim. I'd like to thank the school committee for having us down here tonight. We really appreciate the invitation. Senior captains right here, we have Cara Rogers, Whitney Wilson, Maggie Wallace, and Brianna Wilson also. They did a great job for four years. They were 79 and 14, which was a school record for the amount of wins. So, they just did everything right. They worked out in the offseason. They were MVC champs again this year. They were Division One North runner-ups. They won the Greater Lawrence Christmas Tournament. And everything they accomplished, pretty much, was because they were unselfish, and they put the team first, and they just did a great job in every facet of the game. Maggie was an MVC All-Star, and she was also our leader at the point guard position. She had a great year. Cara was the Christmas Tournament Sportsmanship Award winner. She was MVC All-Conference, and the Roach Brothers Invitational MVP. We also won that tournament in Acton, Bucksboro. Whitney was the Christmas Tournament Co-MVP. She was a Roach Brothers All-Tournament Team, and she was also a member of the MVC All-Conference Team. And Brianna was Christmas Tournament Co-MVP, MVC All-Conference, and she was also selected, only our second one, to be the Boston Herald All-Scholastic this year. So, congratulations, Brianna, and great job, girls. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jamie McCabe. Jamie is the Assistant Varsity Boys Basketball Coach at the high school.
First, I'd like to thank the school committee and the administrators at Lowell High for their support of athletics. It makes our job a lot easier. With me here, two of our captains this year, Stephen Wahom and Julian Scott, and they've been part of a run the last three years in which they've won 58 games, and they've done a great job for us. Stephen this year has been voted an MVC All-Star, and Jeremy, I mean, sorry, and Julian, MVC All-Conference. In addition to that, next year, Stephen will be attending WPI to play basketball, and Julian will be attending Merrimack to play football. So, they've done a great job not only in the basketball court, but also in the classroom. It's going to allow them to continue their athletic career. This year, we went 18 and 6. We finished second in the league. We qualified for the state tournament again, and these guys really went beyond the expectations that most people had for them. It was due to their work ethic, and most of all, the leadership of our senior class. There were a few other guys in and out here, but they've done a great job. Thank you.
Next is our cheerleading coach, John Beaton.
Again, thank you from the school, to the school committee, and for Mr. DiProffio and the support that we get at the school. These are my four captains, Katie Nangle, Alicia Pagan, Kristen Kazimir, and Katie Arsenault. For the season, we did very well. Finished second up at Chickapi, first at South Hadley, first in the North Division, MVC champs, and fifth in the state. So, I applaud these young ladies for the hard work that they gave me, and I thank everybody here for their support, and hopefully, next year we'll be just as good. Thank you.
Next is our hockey coach, William Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee, Dr. Scott. We had a successful year. We qualified for the state tournament, the 11th consecutive year. Boys played very, very hard. I guess the biggest crowning achievement we had this year were 13 of the 25 kids that were on the team were all honor roll students, and I think that's the biggest accomplishment that we had. Dan is our crown jewel. Dan was one of our captains. Last county, was the leading scorer in the state. He was nominated for the All-Scholastic Scholar Award in the state of Massachusetts. We've had two previous winners, Brendan Ocasion and James McKinnity. And Dan did a tremendous job as far as leading us, not only in the, on the rink, but in the classroom as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Next is our boys' swimming and diving coach, Rick Battistini.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and the school board. These are the four athletes that broke the medley relay record this year. It's over a 10-year-old record. We do not have a senior on the squad. Christopher Polsky also broke the butterfly record. Sophomore Kirk Selowitz broke the breast and individual medley record. Kevin Brown and Max Meehan were on the medley relay record. We finished 6 and 2, which was a great year for us, and I just want to say how hard these guys work, not only training in the pool, but in the classroom. As a matter of fact, Max Meehan is number one in the freshman class of over 800. I think it may even be more than that. And my other guys are good students, honor roll students. Thanks
Next is our boys' indoor track and field coach, Phil Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, Dr. Scott. I'd like to just, again, also echo the other coaches in thanking you in advance for your support. We certainly appreciate that. I brought a group of mostly seniors. Actually, did very well again this year. We finished undefeated in the league and won the Division One Championship. I was sixth since 1997. And part of our success are these seniors, the senior captains that we have every year, and I'd just like to recognize them. We had one group of seniors who did very well this year in the 4x800 meter relay. And on that team was Chris Australia. Chris is right here. Chris, if you could raise your hand. Walter Cabrera, Anthony Gentles, and Mike Giardina, that 4x800 team. Also, we received excellent leadership from our seniors, Sean McKenzie, a sprinter, Brian Gallagher in the shot, and Ambrose Carter in the sprint. Ambrose is right here. Our future is also based on the talent of younger student athletes. Behind me is Matt Mitchell, who is All-Conference in the hurdles, and is a very, very good high jumper, comes from a family of outstanding student athletes, Matt Mitchell. And also, Mike Giardina is a sophomore, one of the finer distance runners in the league. Thank you very much.
Next is our girls' indoor track and field coach, Pat Swett.
First of all, I'd like to thank the committee and the athletic department for having us here to talk a little bit about our athletic teams. I brought with me Courtney Baldwin. She's a senior captain on the track and field team. The track team had some success this year in the conference championship. We were sixth out of the 11 teams. We had seven girls qualify for the Division One State Champion, and as a team leader, there's seven school records this year. Courtney was our most outstanding runner this year. Courtney was the Division One State Champion in the 600 meter dash. She was selected as a MVC All-Conference, a Boston Globe All-Scholastic athlete. She, by the end of the season, had posted the 21st fastest time in the nation in the 600 meter, and has recently signed with UMass Amherst, a Division One Track and Field program to run next year. Courtney's also in the National Honor Society. Thank you.
Next is wrestling coach, Tim O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the superintendents, and the school committee for having us, as well as the athletic department and administration for supporting us. This year, we have very high expectations every year with the wrestling team. We have a very proud tradition and history, and these guys continue that. This is senior captain Joe Morris, senior captain Nick Bedard, sectional champ Ibrahim Kadhar, and sectional champ Paul Feely. These are some of the representatives. We finished at 21 and 3, losing to the state championship team Framingham and the New England championship team Timberlane. We finished up at the end of the year of the tournaments. We didn't reach our goals, but we finished very strongly with second in both the state and All-State Tournament, fourth in New England, which is the toughest tournament that we entered. We were the highest mass team in placing, and we did win the sectionals for the 22nd time. We had some individual success. We actually had some great success individually. Five sectional champs were Andrew Gauthia, Christian McCarthy, Victor Diasus, Paul Feely, and Ibrahim Kadhar. We then went on to the state tournament. We had a state champion in Victor Diasus. He was also the All-State Champion and the New England Champion. At the state tournament, we advanced four guys to the, six guys to the All-States. Victor winning, but Nick Bedard was third, Andrew Gauthia was fifth, Ibrahim Kadhar, I mean, Amadou Jalloh was fourth. And at the New England tournament, Nick Bedard had a great tournament knocking off the New England champion, finishing second. And Victor is not here because he is enlisting in the Marines today, but he had a very, very dominating performance at the New England. The best in our history, and we've had, the last seven years, we've had eight New England champs, which is pretty hard to do. But these guys did a great job this year for Lowell Wrestling.
In conclusion, I would just like to thank you, because we are also, in addition to these sports, able to have Alpine skiing, boys and girls gymnastics. We're one of very few schools in the state who are able to have all these opportunities for students, and the only urban school that's participating in Alpine skiing. All three of those programs grew this year in number of students, excellent performances, and a lot of younger student athletes out, and really enjoying the chance to participate in those type of activities. So, thank you very much for your time this evening. Good night.
Mr. DiProffio, coaches, student athletes. You shouldn't be here thanking us. We want to thank you. First of all, on behalf of the entire school committee and the administration of Dr. Chris Augustus Scott and her staff and faculty, first of all, I want to recognize the coaches. I know exactly what you do the minute the season starts until it ends. You live, eat, and sleep this sport with these students. And I know many times, you reach into your own pocket to make it happen. So, I would ask the committee, if they would, please give these coaches a round of applause. And then to the students. You didn't come in second. You didn't come in fourth. You didn't make the playoffs and so forth. As far as I'm concerned, as far as the committee's concerned, you're all champions. Champions in our eyes because you carried on the legacy of a great high school. And the alumnus who played the sport before you are proud of you. Proud of you for going out and competing, competing and putting your best foot forward, whether it's wrestling, basketball, gymnastics, cheerleading, whatever's hockey. I know I'm going to miss some. Voice basketball and so forth. We're proud of you. Extremely proud of you for your achievements, and you'll be able to tell your children's children what a great athlete you were years from now. God bless you all. Would any members of the committee like to offer some remarks? Madam Superintendent, anyone?
Congratulations to all of our students, our student athletes. It's so important that you take part in sports and have that as an enrichment part of your lives. It's a great way to build character, and I've enjoyed coming to many of your meets and games and matches. So, keep up the great work, and we're so glad that so many of you are also academically very strong and leaders in our school. So, we appreciate that leadership that you provide, not only in the area of good sportsmanship, but in the area of academics. And to the coaches, thank you for helping to shape the lives of our youth at our high school. We appreciate your commitment, and it's your character that makes the difference. So, thank you.
We wish you the best. Moving on with the agenda, I will entertain a motion to support the minutes of the last meeting. So moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor, accept that the minutes of the last school committee meeting signify per se and I. And the opposed, the minutes have been accepted and placed on file. And on the agenda, you will see the regular school committee meeting of January 21st, 2009, page 10, as amended. The auditor has requested that, and the verbiage could read, if someone makes the motion to amend the minutes, the verbiage could read with the amendment, "That the committee accept and approve the creation of the position, submitted job description, and proposed salary range of $75,000 to $85,000 for the Family Resource Center Coordinator and Specialist." Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I had a question on this first. What, why are we amending this? And this is the first time this has ever happened to me. Are we being checked on by the auditor's office, or is that the way it's always been, or? I don't understand really what the policy is.
The auditor, the auditor signs and releases checks, payments, and so forth out of the auditor's office. So, when the auditor receives a request for an additional $10,000 that someone's paid, they want to know why. And that, the auditor is doing her job.
But this isn't a contract. This just says that we give permission for the superintendent to hire someone. This isn't really a contract. So, I don't know why we're getting so...
John, that's not the issue. The issue is, did anyone pick up the phone and tell the auditor? Or did the auditor receive the minutes with the right verbiage of it?
So, the auditor goes over our notes, though. That's what I'm not clear on. Does the auditor go...
The auditor goes over everything financially, everything.
Right. But these are minutes. This isn't a contract to hire anybody. That's what I'm just confused on.
Madam Superintendent, maybe you can explain it better to me.
Just to give you a little bit of history on how come we're here this evening on this particular point. Mr. Leahy, you are correct that in the past, job description, this is a new position. This, and I would like to clarify, I think for clarification, that there needs to be a period after the Family Resource Center Coordinator period, and I would like it not to include the rest, because that's really not relevant and muddies the waters for us. The issue in front of us is that the committee approved not only a new position, which we posted for anybody within our system to apply, and we posted that position with a salary range of $75,000 to $85,000, which was discussed at the subcommittee meeting about this particular position. This position came about in the restructuring plan of the PIC department. The employee who presently runs and operates the PIC department is being moved into more of an academic area of our organization and budget. And this position was now going to include not only the PIC center, but transportation as well as food services. So, in the redesign, we were in fact going to ask the person in charge of that whole system to be required to look after three departments. As the past practice here in Lowell Public, that salary range was presented, was given to you in your packets, and when the city auditor and the city solicitor called me yesterday, they asked, please, for verification, for us to send them the minutes so that they could see how the vote was taken. We sent them the vote. They said our votes were all correct. However, it needed, those votes needed to be recorded in the minutes. I asked, in fact, since this had already taken place, and it was in keeping with past practice, since all of the votes that were taken were correct, could we leave it and change this if that's how they want it in the future? If that's how they wanted the minutes, the vote recorded in the minutes, that would be no problem. Both the city solicitor and the city auditor requested that I put it on the minutes tonight, sorry, on the agenda tonight, for this to be re-voted. So, that's how we got here.
I understand that, but my question is, does the auditor or the city solicitor approve our minutes?
The auditor approves payroll. So, we have an employee who received, was hired into a brand-new position. He was hired into a brand-new position, which resulted in a pay raise because of the additional responsibilities, because it was a brand-new, different job.
Right.
So, she wanted, before she releases his new pay, the vote as recorded here, so that she would know that it was recorded in the minutes, not just a vote.
The auditor doesn't check anyone's minutes, but she does do, she checks his finances.
Right. And if we hire someone, we send over a contract. This isn't a contract. This is, that's what I'm confused about.
But the point is, I think, from the city auditor's perspective, is that she needs to know that the superintendent of schools is following the wishes of the committee, and she would like that to appear...
So, she just wanted the range?
She wanted it to appear very clearly in the minutes. She did acknowledge that all the proper votes were taken, but that she just wanted those votes recorded in the minutes.
Okay. Ms. Matt?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I do just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So, the fact that our minutes reflect that we accepted and approved a position does not indeed indicate that we've accepted and approved a position?
That's a good point of clarification. The position was, they want two things, because your original minutes reflected the fact that the position was approved. What wasn't in the original minutes was the salary range for the position. However, that was included...
Wasn't that attached to the posting? I mean, we never move without a posting.
Exactly. It was as it was, all included in your package, and all this information was shared with the committee, and we shared that information with them as well. The conversation went something like, "It would be helpful going forward if we could please have it all recorded in the minutes, so that it's all in one place, and that there's no question, no confusion." That's what I was told.
Which I, and I am all for eliminating confusion any way we can. But my concern is that, it's my understanding, that a legal document, which is what our minutes are, I mean, they're a legal documentation of a meeting that's happened. It's not simply the paper it's written on, it's all the materials that go with it. What we receive as our minutes, it's not these four pages. It's the minutes with all of the attachments or appendices. I don't know what the legal term is for, to be honest with you. But that's what makes up our minutes. Not just our, you know, the listing of the votes, but it also includes all of the paperwork, all the backup that validates the actions we've taken. I mean, so I'm just concerned that in some way, that's not happening, that the, whether it's from whatever office, solicitor or the auditor's, thank you, the auditor's department, that they're not looking at the full complement of materials, and they don't necessarily have what is in fact the legal representation of what happens at a meeting.
What the auditor is looking for is $75,000, what a pay scale, to $85,000.
Which is what, which is what that document has on it. A posting has that scale on it.
But the minute, it doesn't record it in the minutes.
But my understanding is that the posting, which is what we took action on, is a part of the minutes. It's considered a part, we're not, that document is automatically attached to our minutes, because that is what this is referencing to. Minutes only refer to actual documents. That's where the onus lies. So, that is always the case.
And we explained that, and that was past practice, and we did ask the same question, "Why change now for this point?" And furthermore, "Could we change in the future since this vote had already occurred?" And the answer was, "Please put it on the agenda."
Mr. Leary, and then Ms. Fattacante.
I appreciate Mr. Leahy's and Ms. Martin's comments. I think, I don't know if it's that, I guess the thing is that if it makes it clearer and people feel more comfortable, I'm going to vote for it. It's not that big a deal at the end of the day. I know that all seven of us spoke about it when we made that vote. The range of 75 to 85 was clearly part of that discussion. If it makes it easier for everybody, and it's something that the auditor wants, by all means. I mean, I think the only, one other way to look at it is that 10, 15 years down the road, people are just going to look at the minutes as opposed to all that other documentation. And we're dealing with all this other stuff, the sick leave buyback stuff. This might be a benefit to another school committee at a later date. It may not ever come up, but if it's going to make it easier, why not make it easier? Thank you.
Ms. Fattacante.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have to say that in my 22 years, I've never seen this happen. I feel like it's the tail wagging the dog. We are an elected body here, and I have to agree completely with my colleagues, John Leahy and Ms. Martin, when they indicate, when John Leahy says, "Wait a minute, we, what are we doing here? This has never happened before," and when Ms. Martin says, "We sent over legal documentation." I don't think the auditor maybe understands her role. I don't think...
She understands her role.
Your Honor, I'm speaking. Please. I'm speaking. Please. I don't interrupt you, and I'm asking you to respect me and not interrupt me. I don't think she understands her role, and I don't think she understands the nature of how we do business here. I would invite her to come every other Wednesday and sit with us at the table, so that she can, she can cross the Ts and dot the... can, uh, she can cross the Ts and dot the Is, because it apparently she thinks she runs the school committee. This has never happened before. I, I don't even know this woman's name. She's some person from Chemsford, right? Um, I'm not sure what her name is. She's someone from Chemsford, right? Uh, is she, where is she from?
She lives in Lawrence.
Oh, she lives in Lawrence. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Um, our sister-
What does that have to do with it?
Our sister city down the river. What it has to do with, Your Honor, is for 22 years, and many, many years before me, we've been doing business in a particular way. We send over all of our documentation bundled together. Every city auditor has been able to understand that, except for this one. So I don't understand how this person does not understand how we do business. Why all of a sudden, new rules have been created by this person, and interestingly enough, never conveyed to this city body? We are elected officials. We make major decisions. If there are rules to follow, then we should be conveyed a set of rules. If she votes a set of rules, then she should convey them to us, not do something happenstance or after the fact, which is what she's done here. Now, of course, we're going to take the vote, because it involves one of our colleagues. It involves a person who works for us and who does a darn good job for us. So of course, we're going to change that vote. But may, maybe we need to have the city manager confirm for us when a set of rules got put into place and we weren't made aware of it. Because for as long as the school committee's been doing business, Your Honor, we have been doing business in a particular way. Now all of a sudden, we're told that the business, the way we do business is not good enough, or not correct, or not legally binding. I never heard of such an insane thing before in my life. If she's making up a new set of rules, then have the council vote for them, have us vote for them, so that we know what they are. Simple as that. I recognize this woman has a lot of power, but we are an elected body. Like us or not like us, this is who we are, with all our spots and our imperfections and our goodness, too. But of course, we're going to make sure that our employee is not subject to, um, to negative decision-making by the auditor. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anyone else? Speaking for the auditor. The auditor is probably the most trusted person in any town hall, city hall, or anywhere there's a public forum that involves money. The auditor oversees the expenditures of money. When the auditor sends the council, the manager, or the school committee a question or an issue pertaining to finances, the auditor's the boss. They want some answers. And that's the way the system works. All the auditor is looking for is amending the minutes to insert that verbiage, so she will have a clear understanding in the minutes what this is all about. Mr. Leahy.
And, and that's fine, but to give us a clear understanding, she shouldn't go through the superintendent to us, she should go to us as a body and just say, this is what I need for a clear understanding. And that's what we're trying to say. So that's why I didn't understand what it was. When this came to me today, I didn't understand what it was for, because it's never happened to me.
I will entertain a motion to amend the minutes. And you want to read the verbiage, uh, from that, of course?
Yeah. That the committee accepted and approved the creation of the position submitted in the job description of, I'm sorry, of, uh-
I want me to read it from here.
Uh, 75,000, 25,000 for the Family Resource Center Coordinator and Specialist.
Period.
And that's period, right?
Madam Superintendent, you have a question?
No, Your Honor.
Second, who's going to second that? Seconded by Ms. Dougherty? Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattackante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yeas, a motion as amended and approved.
Before we move on with the agenda, I just have to get this off my chest and let it out here. I voted for this consolidation, because it was going to save money. And I think that's what we all want to do, is, is save as much money and, and consolidate a department that's going to be better off in the long run. The employee taking this position, I have the highest esteem for. I've said it publicly, I've told him personally, and I think he does an absolutely incredible job with transportation. And I know he'll do a great job as the head person of this new department. My only, well, the satisfaction is, the pay scale was 75,000 to 85,000. I don't know why we're starting this employee off with 85,000. That's the choice of Mr. Lang and the superintendent. I don't know why we couldn't have started the gentleman off with 78,000 and then worked up to 85,000. That's over the, over, over with and said and done. I just, I just had problems with that. And when I voted for it, I thought the pay scale was going to be 75 to 85. Should have just put in print 85,000 and get it over with. But I didn't like it, and I'm, I'm letting you know my frustrations right now. Okay? Madam Superintendent.
Your Honor, I would like to address, um, your comments, if it's okay, just with regards to this particular position. And if an error was made, I will take, uh, that responsibility with regards to the position, um, as I explained earlier. The, um, person who presently coordinates that position, the coordinator of the PIC center, uh, has not received 96,000 dollars a year. When we looked at the entire restructuring effort there, and we were going to make one position, reasonably, we could have, um, posted that position as a school department at 96,000 dollars and, and had the three departments still fold into that. Given our hard financial times that we are facing, um, I, I wanted to recoup at least some of that money into the 100,000 dollars, which we did. So we reposted the position, um, with the salary range of 75 to 85,000. Um, and based on the person's level of experience and present salary level, and given the new responsibility, that's where they would target within that particular range. Um, the present employee was already making the 75,000 dollars, uh, in the present position with only one department's responsibility. We were asking him to please consider taking on the responsibility of the three and restructuring this whole entire, um, section of our school department and work with us to do that. I went to the employee and I explained to him that, I was very cognizant of the fact that, um, this is considerably lower, um, than we would want to be able to pay for, to pay him, given the responsibilities that we were asking him to do, especially in the light of the fact that somebody who, with one-third of those responsibilities was making 11,000 more. And, uh, he, um, totally understood our financial difficulty, how come that that would be the, the most that we could offer in that position? And, uh, he, um, really, to be quite frank, really enjoys working for Lowell Public Schools and wanted the challenge and wanted to sign up for it. So, um, it is with, um, some regret, Mayor, that the expectation wasn't more clearly reflected in the salary range. But that's why it wasn't, because I knew that the most I was prepared to, to offer that position, because I wanted to recoup that 11,000 dollars back into the savings, was 85. So in fact, the intent was to be clear to the committee that 85 was the top end of the range, and that, that was, um, you know, I wasn't going to be asking for the 96.
Mr. Leary, we'll move on.
Sure, just quickly on that. This is, um, the individual we hired for less than the previous individual, you know, he could easily go to Boston, make a buck 25 just doing the buses. Worcester and Boston call him and tell him how to reorganize the bus system. I mean, he could be a consultant and probably make a significant sum more money than we're paying. Um, the individual has saved, I don't know, a million dollars plus just on buses alone. Never mind letting him get his hands on the parent information center or the food portion of it. This person could save us significant amounts of money in, in the future, a, at the same time as improving service. While I, I note that the, the salary range was 75 to 85, and we paid 85, the picture is much bigger than just that simple sentence. This individual, again, people in Boston are calling him and asking him, hey, what did you do in Lowell? Will you give us information on how to save money? So this person, somebody who's, for 85,000, it's quite a bargain. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, we're going to move on with the agenda. Permission to enter, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, we need a suspension, suspension of the rules to add one more item to the permission item.
I already have that, so, when we get to that, I'll ask for that suspension.
All right, do it, Al. Okay.
Reliable Passenger Transportation, Inc., 14,000, to provide special education transportation services for a student living at the Plummer Home for Boys in Salem, Mass, to Merrimack Education Center in Chemsford, Mass. Funding provided by the Special Education Transportation Budget. I believe the next item?
Uh-huh, sorry.
Move approval by Ms. Fattack.
I, there's more. I, is that the next item?
There's, uh, there's one more, right? Madam-
Yes, that needs to be suspended.
The 34,000?
Right, that's the suspension of the rules.
Is that the, um, the, that's the elevator?
This is the one. Yes. So should we, should we move approval on the first one, and then we'll do the suspension of the rules for the second one?
Right.
You're right, okay. So move approval, Your Honor, on the first one?
Okay.
Ms. Fattack, the second.
Approved by Ms. Fattack, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattackante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Move for suspension of the rules by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary on the Associated Elevator Companies Incorporated. It's not on your agenda, so, uh, all in favor of the suspension?
I-
55% say aye, and 9% oppose. The suspensions are in order. Madam Superintendent, Associated Elevator Company.
For the amount of 34,337 dollars to replace the existing hydraulic cylinder in the elevator at the McAvenue Elementary School. Funding provided by the local budget repair and maintenance of buildings.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval by Ms. Fattack, seconded by Mr. Conway. Before we take a roll call, Jay, would you just want to enlighten us on that, this particular issue for-
Sure. There was a, last week, um, during the annual, uh, elevator inspection at the McAvenue School, it was determined that the main, uh, hydraulic cylinder jack that operates the elevator up and down, uh, had a break in the hydraulic line, and the jack needs to be replaced. Um, it was a condition that actually necessitated, um, immediately shutting down that elevator. So this is a, um, a school with staff and students in it. Nothing that you could predict. We do have some documentation here from the, um, the different service company. Annual preventative maintenance and monthly preventative maintenance were done on the elevator. Um, you just never know when one of these cylinders is going to crack, and it did. Um, it's a part that actually is not an off-the-shelf, um, item. It needs to be manufactured specifically for that elevator. Um, so we're moving with the, uh, city purchasing office on, um, waiving all of the, uh, the formal bidding laws, doing an emergency procurement, and, uh, trying to get a contract executed to this, uh, associated elevator within a week's time or so. Uh, there is a four- to six-week lead time on the actual manufacturing of the part. Um, so it necessitated coming tonight for the suspension of the rules, so that we can save two weeks of time, and before waiting for the, uh, the April school committee meeting. I appreciate your support.
Any questions pertaining to this issue? I'm glad you brought that, this forward. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattackante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Memorials by Regina M. Fattackante, Henry Reynolds, father of Martha Reynolds, Roger School Teacher, and Nancy Reynolds, Pine Art School Teacher. John B. Harrigan, father of Patrick Harrigan, Lowell High School Head Custodian. By Connie Martin, Sister Anne Theresa Neary, aunt of Claire Abrams, Coordinator K-12 Mathematics, James Neary, Coordinator for School Improvement and Accountability, and Patricia Neary, Wang School Teacher. Claire Abada, mother-in-law of Mary Abada, Secretary in the Office of Finance and Operations and Committee as a whole. Leo Brown, Jr., was employed by the City of Lowell in the Messenger Department, a loving husband, father, grandfather. And Mr. Brown was always in the City Hall of Apollo Memorial Library, keeping the buildings clean, and was always representing the city with a lot of class. We stand with the moment of silence with Doc and James.
Thank you.
Thank you, may they rest in peace.
Thank you, thank you.
Any unfinished business?
No, Your Honor.
Public participation. Mr. Paul Georges, United Teachers of Lowell, President, to speak on motions number one and five. And, Mr. Georges, if you, you could speak now, or you could speak when the motions are brought forward. The podium is yours anytime you like.
Um, perhaps when the motion comes forward, I might be better off.
Okay.
Is the first motion coming up right away, or is it? Yeah, so.
It, it is.
So I'd rather speak on five, when five comes up, but-
I, I would advise you, don't move too far.
No, I won't go too far. Do I get a half hour on each of them, bud? I'm kidding, Mr. Mayor, I'm kidding.
15 minutes.
15 minutes. No, I think this, the first one probably is, is, is pretty quick. It, it has to do with, to ask the superintendent to begin the discussion regarding open negotiations with all school unions. You know, school negotiations are tough enough. They certainly, everyone here knows the extent and the energy that's put into school negotiations. Opening the process up to some kind of game show sort of, you know, idea is just not at all productive. It may work well for the local newspaper, which would love to see this stuff, because they, you know, they would, they might get some added readership having to do with this. But negotiations are laborious, they're complicated, um, and they're best done under the state guidelines, which is, state guidelines recommend that they be done, um, you know, in executive session. Uh, you know, I think to an open negotiation would almost contribute to a circus-like atmosphere that's not very productive when you really come down to the nuts and bolts of trying to get the thing done. I guess putting together, you know, a contract, a contract negotiation is kind of like making sausage. Not a real good thing to watch, you know? Uh, hopefully, you get something that's palatable to both sides at the end, but not a particularly productive thing. It's, and you don't necessarily see people at their best in the process of doing it. So there's no union member that I know, there's no union leader that I know in the state that would advance that whole idea of having an open, uh, open negotiations. You've got to be creative, you have to have, be able to come up with what-if scenarios, a number of other things. And it's really a critical, uh, function of the school committee. I mean, that's really one of your primary jobs as a school committee, is the negotiating process. I mean, there's a second, I, I don't necessarily want to go into number five now, but number five essentially says that, essentially says that there should be, start a process where the superintendent would talk to us about possible frills.
We haven't got to that motion yet.
Well, no, no, but what I assume, that under this provision, if we were foolish enough to adopt this provision of an open process of negotiation, that a reporter from the Lowell Sun would sit there with the superintendent and I, talking about possible solutions to a fiscal crisis that we're all facing? Seems totally counterproductive from my perspective. I suspect we would never, we wouldn't agree to it. I don't think it's in the best interest of the school system, so I just, I'd leave it at that. And then I'll come back at five, bud.
Okay.
It's, okay with you.
We're looking forward to it.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Georges.
Thank you, Mr. Georges. Motion by John Leahy to ask the superintendent to begin the discussion regarding open negotiations with all school unions, seconded by Mr. Leary. On the motion, John.
Thank you, Your Honor. When I came up with this motion to put it on, my thought process behind it basically is to bring, bring to light to the public how we spend their money. Transparency in government is just one more way to say, you know, this is what goes on with your money. This is how we come to decisions. This is how we do negotiations. A lot of the times, the public, in my view, they don't get the full story of what went on and why things, decisions were made, and they just hear the outcome. And in today's climate, people are upset with salaries and benefits and decisions that we as public officials make. None of us here negotiate to just throw the public's money away. We don't come up with some evil plans and say, hey, how can we really spend taxpayer money and just give our friends all these benefits? And so when I think of negotiations, I think that transparency is the way to go. I mean, we've had discussions on the floor about having more subcommittees done in open chambers and on camera. So I've done some research and I have come to the conclusion by talking with a few people that, as Mr. Georges said, that yes, maybe complete open negotiations might turn into grandstanding and a bit of a circus environment. But I don't think that there's anything wrong with some sort of a mix of closed and public sessions. I think the people want to know why and how we spend their money. And again, it's just one more layer of transparency that I think we as public officials should strive for. And I don't think that there isn't anything that we can't negotiate. I understand that if someone comes in halfway through the conversation, they may not understand all the scenarios. But I think anything we negotiate can be said out in public. We're spending the public's money. And if we feel that education is a priority and that we feel someone's salary needs to be at a certain range, then we justify it. But sure, if we get cornered in and we feel, you know, I don't ever want to feel like I'm being cornered in and I have to vote for a raise just because pressure by whatever union we're negotiating with. I think everything should be out on the table and shouldn't be afraid of any decisions that we make as a body. During the last negotiations, you know, I have kids in the system and it's very uncomfortable to come into a meeting while people I know are outside picketing. And I don't even think half of them know what the whole story is. So in my view, if we had some sort of a, even a mix, everybody who wants to pay attention can follow it, they can get the correct information. Quite frankly, I don't think all the, in the city, I don't know how people do get the correct information. The radio station may relay one message, the paper relays what they want, and the truth is somewhere in the middle. For whoever wants to figure it out, they can figure it out in their own mind. So the gist of my motion is really just to get more transparency in government, and I think the people want to know how we spend their money. Thank you.
Joe, before we carry on with the motion, will you be able to sit down at the negotiating table if this is held behind closed doors or in a public forum?
I cannot sit in with the teachers' union. I can sit in with every other union. But people elected me to stand up for them, to voice their opinions and to do the right thing. And sure, the teachers' union is the biggest union, but I negotiate with the other unions. I've never understood why everybody waits for the teachers to settle before they settle. I think the union should just settle when they feel the agreement is right. But sure, that's one criticism. I can't vote on the teachers' contract, but I think I am very effective in other ways. Thank you.
Mr. Leary? Then Ms. Martin, then Ms. Fattacani?
Thank you. I think you read the wording of the motion. It's pretty, it is pretty simple. I think it just says have a discussion regarding open discussions. And open can be, it's a pretty broad term. I think the article that Jen Myers wrote in The Sun really illustrated the variety of ways one can do an open discussion. I was in Texas a couple months ago on an audit, and they were doing a police negotiation in the city of Austin, Texas, and they put everything pretty clearly in the paper, both positions. It's a simple chart. Now, they didn't have open discussions, lights, camera, and action with makeup and everybody on TV. That clearly doesn't make much sense. And I would concede to Mr. Georges that, you know, sometimes it isn't pretty how you arrive at a negotiation. Oftentimes, it's not pretty how you arrive in a negotiation. And often, when you're, I think both sides would agree, each party's initial offer is nowhere near where they're going to end up at the end of the negotiation. But some type of discussion, at least acknowledging that the public has a right to have some information at some point in time prior to the end of negotiations, I would say is, well, it's their right. Again, both parties have to agree to it. I think it's funny, I was talking to a former committee member, Timmy Gold, and when, back in the superintendent's separate service years, I think the union came to them and said, we'd like to have open negotiations, and it was the school committee that rejected it. It can go either way. It's not that major an issue, it's a discussion. If one party feels uncomfortable, then by all means, let's move forward to the next issue. It's not the most important issue. Item number five here is kind of similar. It's a discussion. There's going to be facts and information, and once you present facts to one side, they may see a benefit to them as well and want to jump on to part of what we're discussing. So supporting this doesn't mean we're going to have open negotiations. It doesn't mean we're going to be live on television. It does open up a dialogue. It's kind of something, even if we didn't put it as a motion and vote on it, it's something that someone might have brought forward and when we began the rule discussion, when we begin our union discussions. That's simple. So it's not, I don't think in and of itself, it's a very bad thing. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think listening to my colleagues on this topic and certainly to the president of the UTL, I think that anytime we have an opportunity to kind of open the way that we have our conversations and the way that we come to our decisions, I think overall is a pretty good thing. And I think Mr. Leahy's research bore that out, that the idea being that this isn't, we're not trying to create a sideshow, perhaps more of a sideshow than these things already are. But I do think that we could benefit from taking a look at the structure we use during our negotiations. And I think that like any other negotiation, we have two very strong equal parties that are coming together, trying to find the best way down the middle, and trying to find the compromises that allow both sides to be successful. And I think always one of the key indicators of success in that realm generally is when everyone goes home unhappy. If everyone's unhappy, it's been a good negotiation. But what I'd like to see is, and again, Mr. Leary makes the point, even if we could change the wording of this, and I would, you know, defer to the maker of the motion, a discussion regarding more open negotiations that would have to be absolutely supported by the union representation. And if it is one of these kind of hybrid models where perhaps beginning statements are made at the beginning of negotiation, that updates are given by both parties, whether it's the mayor and Mr. Georges doing reports to the public over the course of the negotiations, I think there could be a very positive structure put in place that would allow the public to be extremely well-informed. And I think that's the ultimate goal for all of us, to ensure that the tenor of negotiation stays at a very high level. These are critical decisions that are being made on both sides, and that that might offer us an opportunity over the course of time to keep the public informed and yet retain the ability to be flexible in our negotiations that I think both sides value. So I don't know how Mr. Leahy would feel about that, but moving forward, I would listen to my colleagues.
I like it. Ms. Fattacani?
I'm glad that you reminded us that Mr. Leahy cannot negotiate with the teachers, our largest union. And in light of that, I'm going to ask that we have, that we break this motion into two parts. I do not want Mr. Leahy to fall under a conflict of interest by voting on the motion in its entirety. So I'm going to ask that we separate out the teachers' union, that we vote on that separately, and that we include all of the other unions in Mr. Leahy's motion so that there is no possible look of impropriety.
Motion by Ms. Fattacani to separate the question, to separate the teachers' union from this motion, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Present. Yes.
Mr. Leary? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Five yeas, one present, approved.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to speak on both of the motions, the broken-up one. I absolutely support the idea of looking at our structure for negotiations going forward. I think as Mr. Georges mentioned, negotiations are tough. They're definitely tough. My experience, and I've only been through a couple, I certainly don't have as much experience as some of my colleagues, we have this confidentiality agreement, but the information inevitably gets leaked out to the press in bits and pieces that often don't tell the whole story, that often are not even accurate. And I think it just clouds the process. So anytime we can bring more transparency to the process, I think would be useful. I think that democracy is messy and that open government and transparency in government is not always efficient, but it is the way we have chosen to go as Americans. It's the government that we work and live under. So I think that moving forward, I would very much support both of these motions to look at ways to restructure how we negotiate with our unions and something that would be palatable for all members involved, meaning the unions and the people on the committee. And I think that opens up the public to the accurate picture of what goes on. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Yes, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Mr. Leahy for putting this motion on. And I think that the whole idea is putting ideas on the table, which I've often said, and I think it's extremely important to discuss them. Whether you agree with an idea or you do not agree with it, that's immaterial. But the fact is that from this particular motion, perhaps we can come out with a system that might be a little bit more effective than what we've had in the past. I personally have never gone through negotiations. I certainly have heard about them and the lengthy hours that they do take. And we certainly, and I heard that they can get a little bit bizarre. So anything that we can do that might make this streamline the process and make it more effective, I certainly would be in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, in 1997, when I was the mayor, I remember Timmy Goldham very well. He and I were on the sidewalk on Merrimack Street at quarter to two in the morning. And I didn't know whether to go home and have cornflakes or meatloaf. But it's a long, drawn-out process, as Paul Georges and Michael O'Neil will certainly understand and know. And it's good to have this dialogue, these discussions. And I liked what Connie Martin brought up. You can have your negotiations. You can still have them behind closed doors, but you could have a spokesperson for the school committee and for the union to give the media some bits and pieces of where you are, what you're doing, and so forth. I honestly don't think if you had negotiations at a public forum, first of all, Dancing with the Stars wouldn't be watched that night. Everyone would be watching these negotiations. And I don't think you could really and truly, what could you accomplish? People on the school committee's side and on the union's side, I don't know where you would go with this. Manager Lynch does not negotiate with the fire department, the police department, in 1705, in front of a camera. You'd negotiate, and sometimes it gets, you know, downright hearty. So I don't know where we're going with this, but I like what Connie Martin brought up. And could you repeat that one more time, Connie? How about having?
I got it down here.
Oh, okay. I knew Jill would have that down.
That's my job, okay. To ask the superintendent to begin the discussion regarding more open negotiation with all school unions, providing we have the support by a union representative.
So I don't know what the committee, what they feel like, but I don't know, you know, the Lowell Sun asked me what I thought about having negotiations in a public forum or behind closed doors. And this is my answer. I said, it really doesn't matter to me. There is no money for any pay raises. There is no money. There's no money for pay raises. So I don't know where we're going with this. So Ms. Fattacani?
Thank you, Your Honor. I remember being with you in 1997, and sometimes it wasn't pretty. So I don't, and sometimes it was circus-like, and sometimes people drew lines that they refused to cross. And the reality is negotiations is extremely difficult because it is, it needs to be an immediate process. The union comes in and says, okay, here's my, here's my counter. And the school committee has to rely on people like the superintendent, people like the assistant superintendent of business, to come up with a foreseeable program of what we could accept. So sometimes it's not pretty. Do I want all of those pockmarks that I carry to be openly viewed by the public? Not all of them. But I think a hybrid model of what we do certainly doesn't hurt. And we have been doing that. Again, because Mr. Leahy is not able to be involved, he does not realize that sometimes we have met with the union first and then gone to our respective corners, never to come back to the middle again until we actually agree on a proposal. So we have been using some type of hybrid in the past, and certainly to do that in the future is something that we could think about. And maybe, again, this needs to be a discussion that we have with the union. What are they comfortable with? And what are we comfortable with? So did you go home and have meatloaf or cornflakes in 1997?
I don't remember.
But I think that, I think that the hybrid that Ms. Martin brings up is really, is probably something that we're probably going to meet in the middle with.
Timmy Goldham blamed me, and I blamed Timmy Goldham, for three days later because we're both still trying to catch up on our sleep. But I don't know where we want to go with this. And maybe if we delay action on this and probably have a dialogue with the union and so forth?
Well, the motion would be to, as it is, just to ask the superintendent to begin discussion, and we could change it from open negotiations to some sort of a hybrid model, but...
More open negotiations.
Yeah, well, a hybrid is my way of saying more open.
Why don't we allow the superintendent to open up a discussion, then she'll come back and report to us?
Right. That's, that sounds...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay? Which is what the motion says, I think, right? Okay.
What's that?
That would require us to approve the motions, then.
I didn't hear you, Jackie.
That would require us to approve the motions, and we'd have to take them separately. Because Mr. Leahy's not going to vote on the one involving the teachers' union.
I would say that we...
Does that get me in trouble?
Yeah.
If I just blanket it and say negotiations?
I think you should just vote...
Okay, all right. So to be safe, we can break it up.
So I think, Your Honor, I think we've conveyed to the superintendent our wishes.
Definitely.
So we can vote for the motion, and I think it's clear to her what we're looking for.
Vote on the motion as presented.
Yes, Your Honor.
Right, I agree.
Separated. The teachers and the other unions. We do want to separate, okay? All right. Yeah, okay.
So may I ask, what are we taking first, the teachers or the other unions?
If we just vote, I'm sorry, if we just vote on the motion, I'll vote present.
Vote on the motion as presented, and I like Connie Martin's idea.
That's in the minutes, right?
What's that?
That's in the minutes?
It should be in the minutes, absolutely.
You like my idea?
Want to take a roll call on this motion for the...
As amended, as amended, okay?
No, no. We're voting on the motion as presented. We're going to withdraw the amendment. We're going to vote on the motion as presented. Right? Okay?
So I'm withdrawing my request. So, Your Honor, would you like me to withdraw my request to sever, and he'll just vote present?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'd be the simplest way of doing it.
Okay, sure.
And if there's other discussions, we can...
Okay. So I'm going to withdraw my motion to sever?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. That motion has, amended motion has been withdrawn. Now before us is the motion as presented by Mr. Leahy. Roll call.
So you don't want more open negotiation? You don't want that out?
No, just the way it's presented.
The way it was originally presented, okay? Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Present.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Six yeas, one present, approved.
You think it's easy, Paul? Okay, moving on, moving on with the agenda. The second motion by John Leahy, request the superintendent to provide the school committee with a... the superintendent to provide the school committee with an update on the district's efforts to address and educate students and parents on appropriate online behavior; two, the dangers of social networking websites; and three, the inappropriate use of cellphones, including picture-taking, text messaging, instant messaging, and sexting."
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Fattacani. On the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. The motion pretty much speaks for itself. I have had discussions with, with Assistant Superintendent Murphy, and she has filled me in on what the schools are doing. I've had a few calls from some principals, assistant principals, what they're doing in their schools. My motion basically just wants to make sure that we, we are doing something. We've adjusted it because basically just in the last two years, so much has changed with technology as far as phones goes, and these kids get themselves in a lot of trouble, and they don't realize what they're doing. They don't realize the ramifications. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this issue falls into our laps, and we need to make sure that kids, especially in the middle school, in the high school, you know, know what they're up against. When they take a funny picture in the locker room and send it around, it can get them in some serious trouble. So just want to make sure that we are addressing the issue, which we are, but I just want to make sure that the committee is updated on the, what we're doing and how we've adjusted to the times. Thank you.
Ms. Fattacani?
Thank you, Your Honor. I applaud my colleague, Mr. Leahy, for putting this motion on the agenda. I think it also is incumbent upon us to convey to parents their responsibility in this matter also. We did have an incident, or a series of incidents, at a particular school here in the city of Lowell. Parents were brought in to speak to the principal, and parents said, "My child did this at home, so you can't, you can't, you can't tell me what to do," or "You can't tell my, you can't limit my child's access to the, to the internet or to MySpace," when in reality, the child had posted some very negative information and dangerous information about another schoolmate, which would have allowed any online predator to have determined where that child went to school and where that child lived. And I don't think that young people fully grasp the horror that there are online predators out there, and they, they're waiting and they're trolling for this kind of information. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to convey to parents their responsibility to know what their children are doing. And it's incumbent upon us to convey to young people their responsibility when they are online about the dangers of putting out too much information. We certainly don't want to have to arrest a 10th grader because they take a naked picture of their girlfriend and send it to their buddies. That would be horrific because that is being a pedophile, and that ruins that child's life, both children's lives. So I applaud, truly applaud, Mr. Leahy for recognizing that this, these are things that we haven't dealt with yet because technology is so, is evolving every day, every single day, and it, and kids are, are evolving with it. And the rules are blurring, and boundaries are also blurring as a result of what is acceptable and not acceptable to do on the internet. So I think it's extremely important for us to develop a set of rules, convey those rules to young people, and to make sure that young people and parents out there know what the rules are so that, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where, where we could have a problem. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? It is a good motion, John. All favor the motion, signify per se an aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Next motion, by Connie Martin and James Leary. "Request the superintendent to provide to both the finance and Lowell High School subcommittees a review of the current Lowell High School attendance policy, including but not limited to the financial costs associated with the current policy, and if warranted, provide recommendations to improve the policy and reduce the financial costs associated with the policy." Seconded by Ms. Doherty. On the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, this is something that the superintendent and the headmaster, Bill Someris, are currently working on, and it's something that we discussed at length, I mean, at least since I've been on the committee a couple of years ago regarding the attendance policy. And after talking with the superintendent and the headmaster, there's also a financial component addressed with this that's significantly impacting our budget. I think an overall discussion and a plan from the superintendent and from the headmaster addressed before, I guess, the whole reorganization that they're currently working on as we speak, and joining it with a previous motion that we had of, of last meeting would be appropriate. Thank you very much.
Ms. Martin?
I'd just like to say I certainly support the idea. I think that it's an area that we need to be paying attention to, and any insights that the superintendent and the administration can give us, I think would be welcome as we move into, obviously, a challenging budget season.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All favor the motion, signify per se an aye. The motion carries. The fourth motion, by John Leahy and James Leary. "Request that all schools and school department facilities turn off the lights for 10 minutes at 12 noon on Friday, March 27, 2009, in support of Earth Hour 2009, the world's first global election between the Earth and global warming, with more than 1,200 cities in 80 countries participating in the event on Saturday, March 28, 2009." Seconded by Mr. Leary. On the motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a fun motion. It's a way for our kids to learn, participate, and do something good for the, for the global, for the-
Environment.
Environment. It's a global event, and as it says, more than 1,200 cities in 80 countries will participate. So it's just a, it's a fun motion. It's a way for our kids to get involved, get their parents involved, and to bring awareness to this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Just real quickly, as a co-sponsor, it'd be at 12 noon, so nobody will be sitting in the dark, and it'll be a, it's in, it's at the end of the month, so hopefully it'll be a good event. It is something proactive. There's 1,200 countries doing it, so, 1,200, 1,200 cities in 80 countries doing it, so it's a good thing to join along. It's not a lot of effort to turn off a light switch and turn it back on. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think it sounds like a great idea. I just have a concern. I can think of off the top of my head, you know, one room at, at a school that has no windows. I'm sure there are other rooms like that. Let's say the music room. And if you shut the lights off for 10 minutes, what are you then doing with the kids in that room for 10 minutes? And I just would like to, through you, Your Honor, ask the administration if there are any concerns about that. I, you know, I love to participate in these worldwide things. It's for a good cause and all that, but I want to just think it through in terms of what it's going to mean for classrooms throughout the city that do not have windows, that for 10 minutes, we're just asking kids to sit in darkness.
Why don't we, why don't we say wherever, wherever it's feasible to do that? Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Your Honor. That was my understanding when Mr. Leahy and I spoke about this particular motion. I brought that concern forward and asked that it wouldn't be a problem to, you know, support the motion as long as we could do it at the discretion of teachers and principals in our buildings. If it was at all feasible and possible, we would do it, and wherever it wasn't, based on their judgment, that I would ask for it to be exempt from the motion.
Then I wonder if we could just add those words?
If I could jump in, you know, it's 10 minutes. We can move them to a room with lights. If you don't want to do it, you can vote no on it. But there's 80 countries, 1,200 cities on planet Earth. It's not that big a deal. It's kind of a solidarity thing. It wasn't meant to make life hard or risky.
Yes.
Yeah. If you want to make it that way, we can read it that way. It wasn't a major, major problem. I didn't, you know, 10 minutes of one's life in broad daylight, turning the lights off if they need to move to the next room, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, or just don't do it. That's fine. It was just a nice idea to be part of something positive. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Doherty?
Excuse me, Your Honor. I was in the middle of my sentence. I just wanted to add, if we could amend it, to add "if feasible" or "when feasible" into the motion. I would have no problem supporting it. That was all I was trying to say. Thank you.
I'll second Ms. Doherty's amendment.
Okay. Before we take a vote on that motion, the city council, I believe, on Saturday, March 28, that's a Saturday evening, we amended that to Friday evening, and we're going to shut the lights off for an hour in city buildings, for one hour, not 10 minutes, for one hour. So you could probably shut the lights off in all the schools, you know, for half an hour, probably after 9:00 PM at night. So, but if you want to do it 10 minutes, that's fine. And you want to amend the motion to say wherever it's feasible, seconded by Ms. Fattacani. All in favor of the amended motion, signify per se an aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, what do we, all in favor of the motion as amended, signify per se an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will shut off the lights for 10 minutes or whatever. Mr. Georges, are you ready?
I'm ready. Motion by Mayor Caulfield and Regina Fattacante. "Request the superintendent to begin discussions on how receptive our unions would be to taking a furlough in fiscal year 2010 if there was a financial shortfall in order to avoid layoffs." Seconded by Ms. Fattacani. Mr. Georges?
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. I guess the comment I-
Mr. Georges, in all common courtesy, can I, could my colleague speak first?
Oh, certainly.
Make a difference.
Because maybe, Your Honor, Mr. Georges will understand the most, what we had discussed the other night. We, we know we're facing some kind of fiscal shortfall, but the reality is, we don't know what that is yet.
No, right.
And that's the scary part, that we as a community have not been able to get a definitive number, which would allow us to plan about how we would restructure our, our school department with that new number. So when I spoke with his honor the other night, I first said that I don't want to lay anybody off. I've been here and had to lay people off, and it was a horrible, horrible thing to do. And I don't want to do that, considering our product is the education of young people. I mean, we might be able to go without sweeping a sidewalk, but we can't go without teaching a first-grade class. I remember when we did this, and Mr. Georges remembers, when we, when we laid off people, and we woke up one morning and there were 40 kids in a classroom. And that was, that's an untenable situation, and that is unacceptable. So my goal here is twofold. One, I'd like some information from Mr. Lang to the committee, and that information would be as such, Your Honor. What would it look like if every administrator took one day, or two days, or three days? What would the dollars and cents be in that, in that economic equation? What would it be if teachers took one day, two days, three days? What would it be if everybody at every particular union took one, two, three to five days? What would that mean in terms of our savings in dollars and cents? That, to me, and maybe Mr. Georges will disagree, but I don't want to lay people off because it may not make his job more difficult, but it makes our job more difficult in this room. And the reality is, it makes the jobs of teachers more difficult, and then that makes our lives more difficult. I don't want to lay people off. I would like everybody to retain their position. And one of the ways which we may be able to have that happen is if people came, if people took a furlough. So let's say during a vacation week, they did not get paid one day. Or we could, we could figure out a solution, Your Honor. And the reality is that the superintendent can't have those negotiations with our unions. I think the school committee actually has to do that. So it would probably be, request the superintendent send a letter to our unions to sit down and have that discussion with the school committee, because the school committee is the only body that can actually negotiate with our unions. And we take that responsibility very seriously, even though sometimes at 2:20 at the morning, we're standing out in front of Merrimack Street, wondering what the hell we're doing. So the motion would be, what I'm requesting is twofold. One is to get some information from Assistant Superintendent of Business, and, and that information would be what the, what the different layers would look like if different, if particular unions took one day, two days, up to five days. That information would come to the school committee, and in the meantime, our superintendent would send a letter to our unions that basically says, "Hey, in light of the fact that we could be facing a shortfall, would you entertain a discussion with the school committee?" Now, Your Honor, the response to that letter could very well be no. And that's something that I think we should know about. But I think if, just the response to that letter is, yes, we will have a discussion with the school committee about the possibility of taking a furlough, then I think it's incumbent upon us to begin those discussions over the summer, so that we can prepare, or, or the next spring, so that we can prepare for any kind of shortfall that we have in our new fiscal budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fattacani. And Mr. Georges, if you allow me, I'd just like to briefly give you a synopsis of where I'm coming from. I was at a meeting with Senator Kerry a couple Saturdays ago, and he told us about the stimulus money that's coming in to the state. And he said, "This money is going to be scrutinized very, very well by the federal government." And the issue before us, as Ms. Fattacani indicated, I don't know, the superintendent doesn't know, nobody knows what kind of a shortfall we could have. We could have. How much money is the stimulus package going to help our schools? We don't know. I do know that the city is looking at a $10 million shortfall from local aid. That you can take to the bank. And I do know, if Chapter 70 money is level-funded, and the superintendent can certainly vouch for me, you're looking at a $4.1 million deficit. If the city is looking at a $10 million shortfall, the school department is looking at 20% of that. In the fiscal year 2009, the city had to come up with $550,000. These are the people who stepped to the plate and took a three-day furlough and did it willingly. The school nurses, Manager Lynch and his entire administration, the local fire department, local 1705, the Merrimack Valley Employees Association, city engineers, the local police superior officers, non-union personnel, and the city council. Everyone has come to the plate to say, "We want to help." And I think the gist of the motion, Paul, is, you and I discussed it Sunday, every boat has a life jacket, every car has a spare tire, and every fisherman has an extra set of fishing hooks. And I think what we want to do here is not scare anyone, but prepare everyone. If there is a shortfall, where are we going with Plan A, Plan B, Plan C? That's all we're looking for. And if employees of the school department, whether it's custodians, clerks, teachers, administrators, if they don't want to come to the plate, we cannot print money we don't have. And hopefully, hopefully, we're not going to be a shortfall. But I think we have to be prepared in the long, long run to say we do have a plan if this happens. I know in Lynn, teachers took one day without pay, and they, they didn't want to see their colleagues laid off. But that's the gist of the motion. Not to scare anyone, but to prepare everyone that we have a problem. And I understand that the state is probably $500 million less money than they anticipated. So we don't know what we're looking at in May. We don't know what we're looking at with the stimulus money from the federal government. None of us know. But I think it's wise to bring this forward, and I applaud Regina for bringing this forward. And it's just, it's just presenting it, not to scare anyone, but have the superintendent come up with some facts, figures, and you can go back to your union leaders and know that we're not trying to bring something forward that's going to be a scary tactic. That's not a, it's not a motion at all. So, Mr. Georges, if you want to-
Mr. Caulfield, I would just say that in Lynn, the teachers did indeed concede a day. But I was with Alice Gunning, president of the Lynn Teachers' Union. It appears as though the stimulus money coming back into the system is going to mean they're not giving up anything on that day. I mean, I spoke with her last week on it. The concern I have is that it, the motion says, direct the superintendent to begin discussion, to begin discussions on how receptive our unions would be to a furlough in 2010. begin discussions on how receptive our unions would be to a furlough in 2010, fiscal year 2010. Obviously, one of the most obvious things is you can't furlough a teacher and have them not come in. You still need the teacher in front of those kids. Unlike the other unions that took a day off and did not get paid for the day, it's a different kind of arrangement. I think we can all recognize that. So, it's highly impractical that you would actually take a furlough. Chap, but at this point, it appears the governor's going to recommend level funding, Chapter 70. And I agree with you, Mr. Caulfield, that does represent a loss. However, there's also some mitigating circumstances that indicate that the loss wouldn't be as severe as it would be in the past when energy costs were higher and so on. And there is some creative stuff being done behind the scenes. We know that part of the stimulus package also includes $4.4 million over two years for Title I reimbursement for the city of Lowell alone. Now, the city of Lowell, but that includes charter schools and others, so it's going to be impacted to some degree. And something around $4 million for sped services, which obviously represent a high cost to us. So, there is money coming from the stimulus that is unclear how that's going to be distributed and how restrictions will be put on it. But it's a hopeful sign, certainly much better than saying it wouldn't be there. We also know that this, that what they call fiscal stabilization monies, to the tune of $1 billion that's coming to the state over the next two years, 82% of that money has to be dedicated to education purposes. And Lowell qualifies for the great majority of those things. So, there may be, thank goodness, we have a pro-education governor and a pro-education president, because that's helpful to us. But I think the problem that I have is that what's not being recognized, certainly in the editorial that was written a couple of weeks ago, was that this system has been bled fairly, fairly hard over the last five or six years, or four or five years, to the tune of 500 positions. I'm not blaming anybody specifically for it, but the fact that the funding has decreased to a point where we're doing more with fewer people. So, it isn't as though when the newspaper says, gee, good unions gave up something and the school department side did nothing. Well, it's because they can't take much away from us when we don't have much to start with. So, that is an issue. According to the Mass Budget and Policy Center, the city of Lowell has little capacity to shift some of the debt onto the school department side and still maintain, because there are certain provisions within the law that say that the city has to maintain a certain level of funding consistent with 2008 and 2007 and 2008, or they jeopardize the stimulus money and the Chapter 70 additional monies. So, those are all part of the things. But the concept that we haven't paid a price at this point, I think, is erroneous, and I think that needs to be cleared up. We have been involved with the superintendent in discussions enough to address this, to the what-if scenarios, Mr. Caulfield, that you've talked about. And certainly, we've been in discussions about professional development available through the American Federation of Teachers, our parents group, that has proven professional development practices and willingness to come into the city and help bring down the cost of professional development with a proven track record. These, these programs are proven. We know that two years ago, we negotiated a contract that also opened up health insurance. Health insurance is an expensive proposal. We certainly understand that. We advocate as unions for our universal health care. We'll bring the cost of health insurance in the city of Lowell down about $15 million a year. I mean, we were talking about this six months ago, eight months ago, and it was sort of, eh, pie in the sky. Now, there's so much pie in the sky because people are starting, and the American public is starting to realize public health insurance, having health, health, universal health care will bring the cost down for health insurance and ensure that our citizens are healthy. That is a possibility that could mitigate all of this. When we went to the alternative health care with the negotiations last time around, we saved $500,000 to $600,000 in the first year, and probably Jake could probably tell you, well over a million, I'm certain, over, over those two years. But it is increasing. We understand that. But we did our part in trying to put together proposals that would, that included, and it was our proposal, included alternative plans to try to save money, and it did happen. And we certainly will have discussions to look at all factors to try to address a potential shortfall. I mean, there's, I was at a state board meeting two weeks ago where I spoke with Richard Studdan, President of the Boston Teachers Union, Alice Gunning, and a number of others, as we met, and looked at strategies that might be helpful if indeed it did come to a time of layoff, if there were those kinds of issues. Could it be that you could have sabbatical leave without, without pay, where people might choose to maintain their seniority within the system, but take a year off because of their personal situation of pursuing an advanced degree or whatever it might be? Is it possible you could advance the idea of job sharing, where you might have young parents who, or parents who have young kids that might decide, I'd like to share a job for a year or whatever? I mean, it's just part of an overall strategy that we have and a constant sort of discussion about these things with the superintendent. And as we strategize, we've been doing this for a while, so as we strategize, to try to find solutions out there. I think the focus on a furlough, though, perhaps is not the right one. But although for the sake of argument, I think the motion in itself is innocuous enough. It sends, it sends a message, but it sends a message, yes, that we're concerned, but I don't think that's necessarily the solution. I think there's more creative ways of doing it. And as you know, when you go to the bargaining table in executive session, it's very easy to discuss these, these things.
Might be at a desk here, too.
All things, all things, you can bring any mess, any, any issue you want in, in collective bargaining. One thing I am concerned about is that there would be an attempt to try to undermine the funding of our public schools to balance the city side. And I wear, I wear two hats, bud. I wear the hat of the President of the United Teachers of Lowell and trying to do the best, as you do as school committee people, to, to best protect the interests of the school department. But I also work with the Central Labor Council and try to be pragmatic and try to find solutions so that city side, the city side of the budget can also get some additional funding to help take the pressure off this. We know, for instance, in public safety, there's, there's a lot of money available, but you have to go directly through a grant process to get the money. I've been researching the best I could to try to find grant writers that might be helpful in doing that. So, to the extent that you need reassurance or would like reassurance, that certainly we're thinking about all the possibilities, we certainly are.
Thank you.
And we're trying to do what we can to accommodate it. I'm just think, at this point, it's premature to go into the kind of discussion that talks about furloughs until we have the numbers. And I'm sure we will have them as time goes on, little by little, the pieces will fall into place. I know there's a meeting with Steve Panchiotakis, some of the unions are meeting with that delegation. And at that point, we'll address it. I am concerned, though, that when the message goes out, teachers get anxious about this because, because of the uncertainty. The message I'm sending is that we certainly are looking at pragmatic solutions to try to solve a problem if indeed we do end up being overwhelmed by a shortfall. But I encourage the school committee to fight like hell to make sure that the funding that's dedicated to education stays right here with our system.
What we're looking for, Paul, is, you know, we're all in this together.
Mm-hmm.
And this committee, this mayor, this administration, the most important thing in education is their classroom teacher.
Absolutely.
Without the classroom teacher, those children aren't going to get an education. And you can rest assured that I want to see their classroom teacher remain in the classroom to teach those children. But if we collectively can work together to address any financial shortfalls, that's what we're looking for.
Well, and I applaud the commitment of the school committee, which has been well-known, to keep the integrity of the classroom, you know, to keep, to maintain the integrity of the classroom, because that's really where the work is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion? Why don't we refer this motion to the superintendent, and the superintendent can do some fact-finding and come back with some figures for us. And I, I think it's, it's the first move in the right direction. We have to do this. Otherwise, we'd look foolish in May or June if we did have a shortfall. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The last motion of the evening, by David Conway. Ask the superintendent to look into how to partner with the art community in the city of Lowell to enhance the fine arts awareness in our schools. Seconded by Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, as we all know, that partnerships are extremely important to our Lowell school system. We have great partnerships with University of Massachusetts, with Middlesex Community College. We also have strong partnerships with the nonprofits that do an absolutely great job in our system, in our city. And we have great partnerships, I think, with our business community. When I take a look at this, this area, that I think we can develop a partnership with the many gifted and talented artists that we have in the city. I think that art sometimes is, is, becomes a secondary factor in education. But I think it's also, if we take a good look at it, I think you realize that it is extremely important to the development of an individual. And I, this is, the, the intent of this motion is to ask the superintendent to look into how we can develop stronger partnerships with the, with the art community, and so that we could take this partnership and, and use the partnership to, to help educate our students and get them aware of the, of the arts, the tremendous efforts that our artists have in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, I'd just like to add that I, I very strongly support this motion. I think that any opportunities we have to bring the arts into our classrooms at every level, and better involve local arts and culture organizations in our schools, I, I strongly support. You know, I, I had an opportunity, I was at Merrimack Repertory Theater just last week, and their managing director was talking about Lowell High School was going to be visiting the, the theater, were taking part in their, their education discussions. I know that there are a number of different arts organizations that are very involved. I can think specifically, I know at the high school, whether it's the Revolving Museum or a number of other institutions. And I absolutely agree. I think the art serves such an enormous purpose in our, in our schools, and the more we can harness that, I think the better job we're doing for our students. So, I, I strongly support the motion and look forward to voting for it.
Ms. Fattacanti?
Thank you, your honor. I support this motion also. I think it's a great opportunity for us to involve a thriving artist community downtown, get them working with our high school and our other, our other schools. Since Mr. Conway did mention the word partnerships, I wonder if he wants to combine this motion with his Subcommittee on Partnerships. I don't know if that's something that Mr. Conway wants to do, or is that, okay. So, we would combine this motion with his Subcommittee, with Mr. Conway Subcommittee on Partnerships, and maybe send this to the Partnership Subcommittee, and that Subcommittee would have a meeting to sort of lay some ground rules, I believe Ms. Martin's part of that Subcommittee, lay some ground rules of how we're actually, how we actually want to bring in some partners from the artist community into our schools.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So, you want to refer this to this-
Partnership Subcommittee, yes.
Partnership Subcommittee.
And do I have a second on that?
Seconded by Ms. Doherty. The city insignia, and it's alive and well. Art is the handmaid of human good.
Absolutely, your honor.
And if you, I don't care where you go in this country, Ellis Island, Lowell, Massachusetts is recognized. And it's because of the, not only because of the mills, but because of the arts. And we, we, we're very fortunate, very, very fortunate. Western Avenue, I believe there's 250 artists, maybe 300 artists, who are making a living-
Yes.
-at painting. So, it's a great motion, Dave, and if we can interact with the students of Lowell High School, they're going to benefit as well. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving on with the Subcommittee reports, Personnel Subcommittee Report, approval of the minutes of March 12, 2009. Cardi Martin, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Meeting held on March 12. In attendance were myself, members of the Personnel Subcommittee, Regina Fattacati and David Conway. We also had other school committee members present, including Mayor Caulfield, Jackie Doherty, and James Leary. And representing the school administration, we had Superintendent Scott, Assistant Superintendent Sue Mulligan, and also Kathleen O'Connor, who's the coordinator of our induction program for the Lowell Teacher Academy. We had three topics that we discussed at this meeting. I would recommend that we can take all three motions at the conclusion, if that's amenable.
That'd be wonderful.
There you go. First was marketing, as I mentioned, the, the Lowell program, which is our teacher academy. It is the way that we take new teachers who are new to our system. It is a very intensive series of college-level, graduate-level courses. It also includes mentoring, work with, within their practicum. It is a, not only a very intense program, but it is a widely recognized program throughout the Commonwealth as one that is extremely successful and has done an exceptionally good job at helping new teachers remain in the, in the, in this district and in, in this industry. Historically, you've looked at loss rates, attrition rates, as new teachers came into districts, and this is nationwide data. You know, usually, when you hit the five-year mark, over the course of five years, you will have lost 50% of your new teachers. So, 50% of new teachers don't make it past that five-year mark. And a huge part of that has been attributed to the idea that, you know, teachers come into a, come into a new job. In many cases, they're graduating straight from college, or they're coming from industry. And suddenly, they find themselves locked in a room with 25 faces looking at them. And they don't have the collegial support, they don't have the supervisory support. And it makes that transition into teaching extremely difficult. And I think we've lost, collectively, I think we've lost a lot of very good teachers over the years, again, because nationwide, we haven't focused on this. Here in Lowell, it has been a priority. The development of the Lowell program and the induction program are, of our Lowell Teacher Academy, as I say, has been exceptional and has really had a huge impact on our ability to successfully bring teachers into the profession, and specifically to bring them into a profession here in Lowell with all the unique challenges that that offers. The motion that was made, what I, which I think is extremely exciting, is the idea of opening up this opportunity to the districts that surround us. Setting this up, really, as an income generator for smaller districts that simply do not have the expertise or the capacity to run this type of aggressive, really Cadillac of a program, and give them entry into it. There are tuition costs that are, that are part of this, that would be paid to the Lowell Public Schools, all, you know, expenses that would be paid by the surrounding districts, that districts that would be paid to the Lowell Public Schools. And in return, they would have access to an exceptionally well-run program. And the Lowell Public Schools would once again be setting ourselves up as the place where people come for solutions. So, that was on a motion by Mr. Conway and seconded by Ms. Fattacati to request that the superintendent continue to work with the union and develop a plan so that we can successfully market the Lowell Teacher Academy and Lowell's licensure program to surrounding communities. The second topic that we did discuss at the meeting was an amendment to our list of eligible teachers. Lowell is in a unique situation where we have, because of the McCarthy Bill, we have some interesting criteria in terms of the way we hire. And one of the key things that has happened is that it has led to the development of this permanent sub, a very oxymoronic statement, but it has been a job title here in Lowell for many, many years. What we are hoping to do is institute a change recommended by Assistant Superintendent Mulligan, that would allow us to change the requirements so that we could include the preliminary level of the Massachusetts educator license. Those teachers who have indeed achieved that preliminary level would be eligible to be included on the list of eligible teachers for the city of Lowell. It streamlines our process. It continues to validate our, our focus on bringing highly qualified, and I use that as the, the kind of term of art from the Massachusetts Department of Education, but highly qualified teachers into the Lowell Public Schools. And this would give us more flexibility on bringing people in on a permanent basis, and I think serves the, the purposes of, of our district better, and also still maintains our adherence to the very high level of, of performance and, and background that we require of our, of our new teachers. The third topic that we discussed was the school committee policy on school visitations. I think that, for the most part, as we had gone through this process, we did, we were in, there was great agreement as to what is appropriate. And I think that some of the key things that had been, had been discussed, and it was on a motion by Ms. Fattacati and seconded by Mr. Conway, that school committee members are allowed to go into schools. Issues that are raised, the school committee member is required to bring those issues to the superintendent and/or headmaster principal, and/or a union representative or administrator as appropriate. And that it is not necessary for a principal, headmaster, union rep to be present at every conversation between a staff member and a Lowell school committee member. I think that we all agree that the schools are welcoming to school committee members as they are to the general public, and that it is our responsibility as school committee members to adhere to our policies in terms of checking in at the office, ensuring that we're not disruptive, and making sure that all of the issues that we, that we find out about, the, when we see exceptionally good work done, and when we have, when we see opportunities that staff may be sharing some ideas for solutions for the future, it is our responsibility to ensure that those ideas and, and experiences are cycled back to the appropriate administrators within, within the district. I would put forth, if this committee- within the district. I would put forth, if this committee is comfortable with it, that we accept this as a report of progress, including all three motions that were enacted by the Subcommittee, but any conversation or input from my colleagues is welcome.
Any discussion on the report by Connie Martin?
Seven.
Ms. Martin brought the motion forward to accept the report, as reported by Congress, seconded by Ms. Leary. All in favor of accepting the report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report has been accepted. I just want to say one thing, Connie. It was an excellent meeting, and an excellent report you just had given. I just want to just put a little bit of light on the Lowell Teacher Academy. You're looking at the same mirror image as the Police Academy, Sergeant Tom Fleming and Chief, Police Chief Ken Lavalley. They put on a police cadet academy in Lowell that's second, second to none, and many cadets from all over the state come into Lowell and receive, they graduate as outstanding police officers.
Roll call.
And, excuse me, and the discussion on the Lowell Teachers Academy is the same thing, and it's going to benefit teachers in Lowell, and I believe that they're going to come up with the, that there's a fee associated with that. Is that so, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. What are you saying?
We need a roll call.
We need a, okay. We need a roll call? Anything you say, roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattakanti.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Ms. Martin, anything else to report? We have another Subcommittee report, as soon as I find my notes. Curriculum Subcommittee Report and Approval Minutes, March 16.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Subcommittee on Curriculum and Instruction did indeed meet on March 16. Present were myself as Chair, Jackie Doherty, and James Leary. We had from Central Office Superintendent Scott, Deputy Superintendent Franco, our K-12 mathematics Coordinator Claire Abrams, and our professional development coordinator, Harper Benham. We also had in attendance, representing UTL, Kate McLaughlin, Judy Robinson, and Mary Ann Dumont, and we had teachers Martha Cohn, Marsha Downey, Claire Golis, Matthew Bureinvand, and it was clearly a very full room. Going through, we had seven topics, and I will do my best to make our way through this fairly quickly. First was a research study request which was made by Mr. Bureinvand. He is currently a teacher at the Pine Arts Magnet School, and I think he has, he is an individual who, as I said, is currently teaching in the Lowell Public Schools and is working towards his doctorate at the Graduate School of Education at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. He is doing what I think the Subcommittee certainly felt is a very interesting study that will be really investigating the way children learn mathematics, the systems that they use, the structures that they use to serve problems, and the different representations that a student may use in going through mathematics learning. What I think he's really focused on is this idea that there are students, and we all recognize this, who learn in many different ways, and it has always been the prevailing sentiment that students should be able to defend, describe, the different ways that they come to their conclusions, that they do their, the functions, and is it really necessary for them to be able to do that in the case of every structure, every representation of the mathematics process that they go through? And there is, I guess, the idea that perhaps it's just better that if we recognize that students learn in different ways and process these functions in different ways, is that enough? That they can master the functionality, and that it's not necessary for them to show mastery of every single representation, every single method, that what's most important is that they're finding their way to the most effective method for themselves as learners. I'm a little conflicted about it personally. I'm not quite sure what that, what the impact will be. I think Mr. Bureinvand was also very clear that he's more curious than anything to see what the results of this would be. But I do think it could be extremely helpful, whatever the results are, and in my mind, that's really the key to research, going in with an open mind and not really being able to anticipate what your results will be. So it was approved by the full committee. As I said, if we can take these all up at the end, we can certainly do that. I don't think we have anything that needs independent action. So that was our first topic. Second, we had a progress report on the sex reproduction standards and health education in the district. Deputy Superintendent Franco has done a great deal on this topic, and I think in her typical fashion, she has been extremely inclusive and collaborative in trying to find a solution for, based on the priorities that have been expressed by this committee. Bringing together a number of instructors from throughout the district to work on this, I think has been extremely helpful. They have been able to get a very strong sense of what's going on currently in the district. Not surprisingly, I don't think we found out that there is a pretty wide disparity in terms of topics, in terms of coverage, and really, we're looking at our next steps to include bringing together our 5th through 12th grade science teachers, being able to link both the middle school and the high school in this endeavor, so that they can go through the process of determining appropriate grade level standards, developing core lessons, and really working to build a cadre of teachers who are comfortable with this subject matter and want to be able to implement it effectively. There's no real determination at this point as to where they'll be pulling their information. I think the greatest strength of this approach has been that it will be our own teachers, our own educators, who will be making these decisions for the population that they know best, and they'll be able to draw from a number of different resources to develop and really tailor a program that specifically meets our families' needs here in the city of Lowell. Our next topic was the Research for Better Teaching Study.
Excuse me, Ms. Martin.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one second. I just wanted to comment that Mr. Leary's motion this after, this evening, about children's awareness of sexting and all that, that I think that that has a direct connect. That motion's excellent for us to make sure to include and incorporate into this study. So when that was seen in the motions, I just think that that's a natural progression for us to include it in a formal way, so it's very timely, this all comes together. So I just wanted to comment on that, and I think that I'll put that forward to the committee, Ms. Martin, with your, with the approval of this committee. So, thank you.
Our next topic, as I said, is Research for Better Teaching Study. This is with Dr. John Safier, who has been very active as a educator's educator here in our district, has done a great deal of professional development. We had requested additional information on this so that we could be very clear as to the scope of this, of this study endeavor. Really, what this is about is the idea being that the excellence that can be seen in the Lowell Public Schools, and I mean this, you know, quite literally, on the front lines, people in the classrooms, the way they're working with children, working with materials, is exceptional and has been recognized as such. This individual is working to develop really a video library of best practices for teachers. This is, I would categorize it at a fairly preliminary stage. What we, what, the first question we had asked to be really answered was the interest of local R principals in participating in this, and the response was extremely positive. Principals were very excited to be included and liked the idea of their teachers being featured in this way. The key thing that we built into this really was the idea that it is absolutely voluntary for a teacher to make this choice, if they'd like to be part of it. It is also, you know, voluntary in terms of if there will be any student involvement, though my understanding is that that will be limited, and that it really will be an opportunity to showcase some of the exceptional work and the exceptional practices that happen here in the Lowell Public Schools. We appreciate the additional information. This was something that had gone back for further review, and I appreciate it coming back to us now to move forward. I do believe that the Subcommittee was comfortable with the information we received and did recommend that we move forward. Our next topic was the idea, was the school calendar, which needs to be approved for next year, and really its relationship to changing ideas around our professional development within the district. We are considering making a change in terms of moving towards a limited number of half-days for, to be directed towards professional development district-wide. I think everyone on the Subcommittee and those others who were in attendance recognized this is a big question, and it is a, it will be a big endeavor. We had, you know, a great deal of conversation and discussion. We asked a lot of questions. The superintendent, I think, has been, you know, up till this point, certainly has been sharing with us her ideas on this, and I think that she certainly had a strong sense of what the concerns are, and where, had made the request that we receive additional information before we make any final decisions. Like anything else, there are positives and negatives to it. For myself, as I look at it, the idea that we would have this time would be an enormous resource, and it would be our responsibility, certainly from the school committee perspective, and perhaps even more importantly, from the administration's perspective, that we get the most out of this that we possibly can. It is a huge investment in time in our teachers, in giving them the time that they need, and we recognize that, but there is a lot that goes along with this. So there will certainly be further conversations as we move forward. The Subcommittee, I think, again, asked a number of questions. We'll be getting that information back as we move forward, and at this point, it was really accepted as a report of progress, and hopefully, we'll be able to move forward fairly quickly. I don't know if Ms. Fattakanti would like to comment on that.
Ms. Fattakanti?
I just have one question, Your Honor, through you, Your Honor, to my colleague. I still don't see that we got an answer on the Research for Better Teaching Study. The question was including the time commitment on the part of our schools, and the answer on page two is principals were unsure of the exact amount of time. So we still, so we still do not have an answer to that question.
Well, I think that we can get some additional, you know, hour breakdown. My sense was that in the conversations with the principals, again, it was a preliminary conversation. They do not need to commit until all of that is presented to them, and they would be accepting as individuals. That, you know, a school would choose to participate in that. If the timing was onerous, they would be able to refuse. So we're just giving them the opportunity to have that next level of conversation, if that's...
Could I just ask a question? Where do we stand on Healthy Futures and Planned Parenthood? Where does this lie?
The way that stands at this point is that our own internal teachers are coming up with their own, to move forward, they're coming up with their own understanding of how we respond to the curriculum standards, how we implement it here in the Lowell Public Schools. My understanding is that once they finish and pull together the, a report on what exists today, they will be pulling information and expertise from both organizations and other organizations and resources as well. I think the overwhelming result of this preliminary survey of working with our teachers is there was no one right answer, and we wanted our teachers to really handcraft a program that met our specific needs, our family needs, so there would be no, you know, there's no package that we're buying.
So they're going to come forward with a recommendation?
Absolutely.
And the committee will vote who's going to implement?
That is my understanding, but the superintendent, I think, has a...
Madam Superintendent?
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. I think although we understand the history of how this debate got framed in accordance to who the vendor would be, but I don't really think that that's the most helpful way to frame our concern about the gaps that are presently in our sex ed programming throughout our system. I think our teachers are doing a great job looking at the gaps, and it's our responsibility as a school system to ensure that the curriculum frameworks are met, and that's really what our teachers are looking at, and how that will be taught, and what curriculum will be taught is all part of that. But I don't want the focus to be on the vendor. The vendor, we're hoping, is going to be our teachers, and they will deliver the curriculum in concert with other resources. So I do applaud the work that's being done presently by our teachers on this project. Thank you.
But the committee will still decide who that vendor's going to be?
I think the reality is, is that at least as we're moving forward, it doesn't feel like we're going to be really picking a vendor.
Right.
That's my...
That it will be an internally homegrown program that we create ourselves.
We won't have a say if it's going to be Healthy Futures or Planned Parenthood?
Yeah, that it will be a Lowell Public Schools endeavor, that we will create the curriculum ourselves to be presented by our teachers.
And what program would they be following?
They'd be creating their own, their own standards that would draw from...
It wouldn't be Planned Parenthood, it would be Healthy Futures.
My understanding is that it could be, that the teachers are going to come up with a recommendation that we'll have to look at. They may be taking some aspects from both those programs, they may be taking some from some entirely other programs. But our key is that we want to make sure that we're comprehensive, and, it's okay, that we have a, that what we build is exactly responsive to what our teachers recommend.
Have I opened up a can of worms here?
It's only like the fourth of...
Thank you if I could just comment on this. I think the task force is looking very closely at the district as a whole, getting feedback from our educators on the front lines about not only what the state requires for standards, but how we want to approach it at different age-appropriate levels. And the part that I think is very interesting is that we're actually going to be aligning it with what they're doing at the high school. So there's a whole plan from grade six right through to high school in terms of, you know, comprehensive program that our educators are putting together. The part that's still, I think, not decided yet, you know, as we get the recommendations for the task force, we'll know what the thinking is on that, is how we actually implement it in all our middle schools. Because right now, we only have three full-time...
Three and a half.
Three and a, well, I was going to say, three full-time health educators and one half-time health educator. And as you know, we have three times that many, or more than twice that many, middle schools. So I think there still could be a role for an organization like Healthy Futures if they were able to meet, teach the curriculum that we have then designed, but that's not been decided at this point. But we're still not sure how we're going to implement it throughout the district. That's my take on it.
Ms. Franco?
Yes, our teachers, as teachers do in developing curriculum, we're talking about process, not product. So at this particular time, we're developing the best curriculum we can that is going to include all of the standards, including the technology pieces that we brought forward this evening, and to make that, and so we're going to have a wealth of information. When we come together, we're going to provide our health educators with hopefully some substitutes, so we could get a really, a good block of time to plan, and they're going to bring really successful lessons and already strategies that they use with high school teachers also on this core group. So really, we're into process, not product. So when we get to the product stage, of course, that comes before the committee as natural progression, if in fact, that is part of the recommendation. But this is teacher-driven at this particular time, and we'll report back every time we meet. So to be sure that there'll be no product piece until we come before you all.
So, Your Honor, may I ask a question through you to the Deputy Superintendent? What personnel are we using now to deliver the service?
At this particular time, Ms. Fattakanti, we have the 3.5 health teachers that deliver the service in those buildings. The product, the essential standards, the sex standards, are delivered by Healthy Futures across the system in the other places. So they work in all of our, all of our schools. In some places where these health teachers exist, they only teach in grade eighth, or they only do specific lessons, but they're in all of our buildings. So in the buildings that have no other resources, that product is really embraced. And that was really a very interesting meeting because there's a disparity amongst the teachers themselves also, and what more we have to do. So that's why we're trying to equal the playing field and then see where in fact, we're going to need to have, I mean, this could become most definitely a staffing thing, too. So this is all, will come out.
One other question, Your Honor. So my concern is that in the meantime, we're, the longer we wait, the more dire the circumstance gets. I don't think any of us is completely 100% happy with Healthy Futures, but I don't think anybody was 100% happy with the other, with the other group either. So the longer our, that we take, not that I want to rush anybody, but the longer we take, the more, you know, dire our situation becomes. So I'm wondering if we have, we're looking at some kind of a deadline of when we're going to stop talking and start acting. Do we have a deadline?
I believe we need to have something, a really definite plan by April occasion, by the end of...
Okay.
by the end of April.
Okay. I'm really happy to hear that.
And we're gonna try the best we can. I mean, getting substitutes, we'll have to just get people in because we need that dedicated time. When these people get together, they're such content specialists, that even in the, the shorter meetings we've had after school, um, it's been, they've been very productive. So, um, we'll actually make that commitment to have something by the end of April.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank You, Your Honor.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank You, Your Honor. Two quick comments. Um, the first one, I, I don't think our current situation is dire. I think that we recognize that Healthy Futures has been providing a very valuable service to our middle schools that do not have the staffing. Uh, but that model was not a comprehensive sex education program, and we wanna move towards a more comprehensive program. So, I, I think that we're moving in the right direction, and certainly for implementation in the fall, that's, we're on target for that. The second comment is just to remind folks that the Citywide Parent Council is having a meeting Monday evening at 7:00 PM at the Wang Middle School to really discuss, uh, well, one part of the meeting is how to talk to your kids about sex, how to, how to have those discussions in a family environment, which is really where those discussions should begin. And the other part of the meeting will be to get feedback from parents, really a listening session, um, about how they feel the role of, uh, the schools should be in, on this issue. So, I just thought, since we're talking about this particular topic, it would be a good idea to remind folks that the Citywide Parent Council will be discussing this issue with parents. And I know members of the task force plan to attend, and I would encourage everybody else who could make it to be there at the Wang. Thank you.
It was an excellent report by, by Connie Martin.
I'm sorry, there's still more.
Oh, you are?
I am so sorry. You don't know.
Okay.
You don't know.
There's a chair behind me. I can follow...
You should. I'm sorry. I know, I'm, I'm really trying. Uh, just to wrap up the conversation on the professional development, um, change that we're talking about moving to the half-days, I just wanna be clear that, uh, a little later in this meeting, uh, the superintendent is gonna be recommending for approval, uh, school calendar for next school year. That does not include these part-time days, uh, these early release days. Uh, if the committee at our, at our later meeting does make the choice to move towards, um, to make this decision to institute, um, early release days, it will have to, we will then have to amend the calendar. But there, it was the prevailing sentiment that we needed to get the information out regarding the April vacation dates and, and all those things, so family could start, families could start making plans. But we will have, um, additional information, and the committee as a whole will be moving on that in the very near future, 'cause it is a decision we're gonna need to make, much as Ms. Fattacanti had said, in a very timely way. Next topic was financial literacy. I had brought this up as a mo, as a motion, as a motion at our last meeting. Um, and, uh, we will be moving forward to try and implement for, we're looking at a September timeframe for this, being able to pull some of the, there were several different, uh, financially-based curriculums that we were looking at, and being able to really use those to support, uh, and improve our existing mathematics programming, not supplanting in any way what we do, but using just basically this, um, this focus on financial literacy and understanding and incorporating into our existing, uh, curriculum. The other part of this motion was to institute a series of financial education evenings at, uh, schools here in the city of Lowell that would be provided free of charge for parents, um, based on partnership between, uh, certainly the, the Lowell Public Schools. We would hope the city, uh, I would also say, included in that community teamwork. Um, and, and we are hoping that once we develop what the, a proposal is to what this kind of evening will look like, we are very, um, hopeful and optimistic that we'd be able to garner the very strong support of the many banks in our community, who I know currently are very involved in financial education and volunteer a great deal of time in supporting many nonprofits who provide this kind of information, uh, and educational opportunity. So, we will be moving forward with that, um, looking to see if there are any specific schools that are interested. We are hoping to host at least two of these events before the end of the school year, so that is an ambitious plan. Uh, and we will be reporting back to the, the school committee, um, from the subcommittee to the school committee with additional information on that. Uh, the adolescent literacy report, uh, I report on this on a very regular basis. The curriculum subcommittee has focused on this a great deal. I think one of the key things that we, um, really learned from this was the idea of continuing to, to reform our literacy efforts from kindergarten through senior year in high school, and really ensuring that we do have that, that vertical understanding, uh, throughout the district as to the way, uh, we incorporate literacy into our cross-curricular, as well as, as I said, the, the vertical, um, motion as students move through the district. Um, I think that was really the, the key thing that we discussed at the meeting. Final topic was the middle school mathematics report. We did have, um, as I said, Claire Franco here to discuss this with us. Uh, she did talk about the algebra seminar program that is in place at the eighth grade, um, and how they have been working with the, uh, with the high school to strengthen that transition from middle school to high school, uh, again, improving that vertical articulation so that there is a very, um, streamlined process as students go through this, this learning, uh, so that it is supportive throughout, um, and that our math resource teachers have been very focused on developing, uh, our interventions for the power standards, um, which are those kind of overarching mathematics concepts that are part of the, the curriculum at every level, uh, in every topic area, so that there will be, um, uh, basically a, a desk guide for all of our teachers that they can refer to to better inform their practice within the classroom. Um, I would really enjoy submitting that as my full report, but any comments would of course be welcome, and of course, Mr. Leary has something to add.
Of course, I have something to add. Just, I wanna thank Claire Abrams for doing a lot of work here. I think, obviously, the committee has worked hard on, on mathematics and literacy. Um, a thing that's different, though, that I, that I think will have more success is we're actually including the high school in these, in these, these discussions. So, we're not leaving like, a, a fourth of the whole system out. I think Claire has worked well with the high school, and I think the high school's worked well with her, and we'll have a lot of, uh, success. Thank you.
Adopt the report. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I'd make the motion if we can adopt the report and all the included, uh, motions within...
We're gonna, we're gonna take a roll call on the entire, 'cause there's a few things in there that might require a roll call, but adopt the report as a report of progress and adopt the recommendations brought forward by the committee, by, uh, Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Moving on with the agenda, reports of the superintendent.
Thank You, Your Honor. Uh, the report on the Knowledge Bowl for 2009, and I had the pleasure of attending last week, um, at the Butler School. And, uh, this is a longstanding academic tradition, uh, with Lowell Public Schools, and many of our teachers and administrators have been committed to, uh, the Knowledge Bowl, uh, for a few decades now. And to see our students, uh, participate so eagerly and so proudly for their schools was really a, a fun evening. I'll, um, pass, um, the baton to, uh, Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco so that she can review the highlights of her report. Thank you.
Accept the report as a report of progress, placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Ms. Madam Superintendent, if you wanna, on the 2009, 2010 school...
Your counter. Uh, just to conclude, uh, Your Honor, just with regards to the Knowledge Bowl, I, I just wanted to, um...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just wondering if it was okay if, um, Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco could just review some of the highlights in the report?
Oh, sure. Definitely.
Just so that our, uh, school community at home can hear and help celebrate, um, this great event. And perhaps, um, too, to acknowledge that tomorrow night at 6:30 at the Butler School, um, school committee member Connie Martin, myself, are gonna be finalists. And at the request, sorry, judges, not finalists, trust me.
We're not finalists. Believe me.
Trust me. Sorry. Just judging, and they're giving us the answers ahead of time.
We get the answers. That's the difference.
So, we're, we're set. And, um, at the request of, uh, school committee member Jackie Doherty, uh, Jim Campanini was requested to also be a guest, um, judge, and he said he would love to attend. He's giving up a Bruins game to do so, but I would just thought I would pass on the request, and, uh, he said he would be delighted. So, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank You, Dr. Scott. Just to let the general public know that tomorrow evening, it'll be the Sullivan, the Daly and the Wang schools in the final competition. But we were, we were, it was such an incredible competition. Um, one evening, uh, the last results were Sullivan School, uh, won by five points, uh, and Stark Losa was second within the five points. Each competition had, um, incredible, just a small difference within the score. So, the competitive nature and, and schools that used to be runaways, you know, there's much more, uh, evenness across the system, and the competition was fierce. The interactive nature of the competition has been incredibly rewarding. And so, we're seeing, uh, a great bit deal of growth across the system, and so that was, uh, great news. Um, I go just to say, wow, we have to beef up on this and that. It's really a good overview of what you need to look at in curriculum, so that was, um, something we enjoyed as all of us who attended, so...
Ms. Doherty?
Thank You, Your Honor. Just one quick comment. Um, I, I think it was last week at the secondary, uh, competition, we had tough math questions. I mean, really difficult math questions. Every single one of those schools got every single one of those math questions correct. And just from, you know, really, only in the last five or six years, actively, uh, attending these and watching the games, that, I think, was the first time in over a decade that you had a situation like that, that every school got every math question on the math round correct. And I think it really speaks volumes to the, uh, the revamping we've done with the math curriculum and with the professional development around math instruction. And it was just very exciting to see. And as, um, Deputy Superintendent Franco mentioned, we saw a lot closer scores, which is also very exciting. So, it's, it's a great event. I think that it's gonna be televised live tomorrow night, but...
I guess there's gonna be a reporter from the Lowell Sun at a minimum.
Oh, there'll be a reporter there too. But if you can't make it out to the Butler School, you could watch it on TV. It's really, it's our own game show. It's great.
I'll be at the Butler School. Watch what we move these kids on, like we did tonight with these athletes. We should do the same thing academically. Madam Superintendent?
Thank You, Your Honor. Submit the 2009, 2010 school year, um, for committee vote. Calendar?
This move, move for approval by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. The, uh, superintendents, uh...
Conventions, conferences.
Conventions, right.
Uh, the first one's the, uh...
Motion to take them up in their entirety?
One.
Second.
Motion to take the, uh, convention, conference request as a whole by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor of doing that? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's do it. Okay. Um, do you wanna repeat any of these, Madam Superintendent or...
I think we're good.
Oh, that's fine.
Well, you okay?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Seven yeas, all approved.
Communications?
Ah, Your Honor.
Yes.
Can I just, just make one brief comment on the, uh, conference, uh, on the, uh, conference request? I just wanted to point out that there is one conference, uh, request from Claire Abrams and Martha Cohn from the Wang Middle School they're gonna be presenting. Um, and I just wanted to say that, uh, these two employees, they do exceptional work for us, and especially, uh, Martha Cohn from the Wang, um, you know, the partnerships and the work she does with the kids with the science program. I've seen firsthand over at U Lowell during these summer programs and partnerships, and, uh, I just think it needed to be said because here's a person that works for us, one of our, one of our many great teachers that goes above and beyond, so, uh...
Good, good point.
She does great work to get these kids involved.
Can we record that in a minute, sir, Madam Clerk, and make sure that we are recognizing those outstanding teachers? Um, communications, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, a winter vision meeting held in Lowell on Saturday, March 28, 2009. Jackie, you have any issues on this?
Yes, I, I'd like to just invite my colleagues to attend, uh, if you can. We've got, um, State Senator Steve Panjatakis is going to give us an update on the state's fiscal situation, and Glenn Kucha, the executive director for the Mass Association of School Committees, will be talking about the stimulus package, as well as some, um, advocacy reforms we could ask the state that would not cost the state money but would help us do our job, uh, better. We have, our superintendent has graciously agreed to be on a superintendent panel that includes representatives from Worcester, Malden, and Somerville, as well as Lowell. And the whole focus is cost savings in tough fiscal times, that we can learn, we can talk about some of the great initiatives we have in Lowell that we've done in the past that we're looking forward to do, and we can learn from other urban districts how they've been able to save money.
This is open to the public, and where's it gonna be held?
Well, it's held at the Stark Losa School. It's really geared to school committee members. It's the Mass Association of School Committees.
Well, how many people will be attending?
Well, we're hoping to get, uh, 40 school committee members from across the state.
The general public might wanna go and listen to...
Yeah, and it's LTC is going to be, uh, filming for us, so it will be on cable television. And, uh, we are gonna be having a, a taste of Lowell luncheon. That will be some of the different ethnic foods that, uh, represent the backgrounds of the children in our schools.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Accept the communication, place it on file, and so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any other discussions? Nothing? Move to adjourn. Thank you. What's that?
What time? Who will move to adjourn?